Will you want to start?
I was wondering if Park was ready usually. Good evening, Littleton, welcome to the Select Board meeting for February 12th. You want to start with the pledge?
Sure, why not? It's tradition. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this meeting is solely devoted to talking about the leasing of the orchard to the Brandsfield Tree Company. We had meetings last October with, through the Orchard Working Group and the Select Board where we picked the Brandsfield Tree Company as the candidate we'd like to negotiate the lease with from the RFPs. We've been negotiating in good faith since then and are fairly close to finalizing an agreement. And this is the opportunity that we promised everyone to come and question Mr. Brandsfield on his proposal.
Or us.
Or us. Everything has been posted in the packet online for everyone to view. As we said, this is about the Brandsfield proposal. And Brandsfield, we're not rehashing, relitigating which proposal we picked. This is an opportunity to question Mr. Brandsfield on what his plans are. We have a meeting scheduled for March 6th with, through MAPC. It's the Nagog Hill Orchard Community Meeting. It will be a Thursday, March 6th at 6:30 in the Sturts Room. I have a flyer that will be posted online. And that will talk about-
The whole process.
The whole process, how we got here, what the steps going forward, what's included in the lease, what's not included in the lease, steps going forward for what's not in the lease. We have a follow-up meeting scheduled for April 14th, which will be further steps outside of the APR land potentially or things going forward. So looking forward to people at that meeting. I've asked Mr. Goddard here to act as our moderator for this meeting to make sure that we're staying on track and on subject. So he's going to be assisting us, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll turn it over to Mr. Brandsfield to introduce himself and his proposal and before we open it up for questions.
Hello. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate this opportunity and I'm very grateful for the privilege to talk to you. What we're proposing primarily is a native tree farm. So we're looking to produce native trees that are listed in the proposal. These are trees that are required and needed for ecological restoration in the state and in the area. They're often not available. They're not available at any particular size, so I'm looking to fill that need. The standard nursery production is a rather industrial and violent affair for the trees, meaning that a lot of the more sensitive trees that we would like to have are not available except for very, very small sizes. So I've been working with new container technology for the last five years and have come to some good outcomes using these air pots specifically, so that when we produce our trees, they don't have to be stabbed out of the ground with machinery. The entire root system is included in the tree, so their survivability is much better and their overall growth is much healthier. So this is a need that's out there in the community and this is one that I see is a great opportunity to help with woodland restoration as well as construction projects, you know, meeting the needs of the native trees. We can get as many red maples and, you know, dogwoods as we like, you know, Cousteau dogwoods, but there's a real need for better, healthier trees. And these are trees that won't require pesticides, won't require fertilizers, at least not the standard chemical fertilizers. So I think the alignment is really nice with the land. In my perspective, land is sacred, soil is sacred, water is sacred, and I want nothing to do with harvesting, harming, distributing, or toxifying those elements. So that's the goal, is to produce these trees in that way. And as far as me, I've been working with plants as early as age eight in my grandfather's greenhouse. And when I was in my mid-20s, I moved over to arboriculture, where I was an arborist, I'm still an arborist. We primarily focus on preservation, not necessarily a big removal company like One Little Tree Masters or such. So I want to move deeper into that direction of preservation, restoration, and away from kind of commercial, residential, you know, arboriculture. So I see this as a great opportunity to do that locally, as well as producing trees. I would like to share all that I've learned about nature, wildlife, and crafting, working with plant material, fiber arts, basket weaving, all of that. This is a long passion of mine. I like the idea, I love the idea of creating a space that brings in more people, forms alliances with more people, to get in line with these goals of getting people back to nature, getting people in touch with the earth, in touch with plants, and in touch with the food and the medicine that's produced by plants in our area. And we hope to bring in other people from other places, people who know things, experts, as well as people from all walks of life that have knowledge and interest in this. In addition to that, a lot of the land will be put to the use of trying to create more resilient species of our native trees, so elms, chestnuts, now beech trees, American beech, ash trees, you know, these are all trees that are potentially on the brink of extinction because of how we live. So what we need is space to hybridize, cross-pollinate, find alternative ways, non-chemical ways, to preserve these trees. So having the space nearby, close to a lot of, you know, very intelligent people that can help to find alternative ways to preserve these species is another goal. In addition to that, I want to produce food. Chestnuts, American chestnuts, hybrid chestnuts, red mulberries, pawpaw, blueberries, you know, all of the food-producing plants that I've indicated on the proposal are ones that are not pesticide-intensive or at all, as opposed to the apples that are there now. We all know that apples require a tremendous amount of chemical inputs and I have very little tolerance for that anymore in my life. I've had enough exposure to diesel and gasoline and melatheon and fungicides and all the above. So this is a mission in my life to find new ways, more harmonious ways, to preserve these plants, to propagate these plants, to disperse these plants without those inputs. And that's the main thrust of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Do any of the board members have any comments they'd like to make at the outset before we-
I don't.
Open it up?
Nope.
Okay. We're now going to open the forum up to questions that folks may have. And if I could ask you to raise your hand or identify that you wanted to speak, and please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and then make whatever comment or ask any question you have of the board or of Mr. Brandsfield. And keeping in mind, of course, that he's the reason we're here tonight, to hear about his philosophy and his proposal, particularly his management plan, you know, for the orchard. So if we could confine our questions and comments to that, that'd be great. And I hope I don't have to remind anyone to, you know, kind of keep within the bounds of those structures. But we'll see how things go. And I see someone lined up already to speak, so if you'd identify yourself and ask your question.
I'm Christine Nordhaus, I need no introduction. I'm sorry. I have two very quick questions for the Select Board, actually. But first, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Brandsfield for this proposal. Your holistic approach to farming and land management is an inspiration to me. I'm kind of a tree nerd myself.
Thank you.
And I really hope that your operation will serve as a model to Littleton and beyond for what farming can and should do. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
My question to the Select Board is, you know, several years ago when I was on AGCOM, the old Select Board was not monitoring or enforcing the lease at all. Is there a detailed plan in place for monitoring this lease and reporting to voters, like, annually? And if not, can you create one before signing the lease to make sure it's reasonable for Mr. Brandsfield and guarantees that your successors will follow it? Because that's the big one.
So I'll take the first pass at this. Matthew can fill in. My understanding is the old lease also had requirements for annual reporting with Mr. Otter. And the Select Board frankly isn't very good at making sure we follow up on all the reports that we are supposed to receive. It's, there's a lot of them and it's hard to remember what's supposed to come in when. It's a lousy excuse, but it is the way it is. So what I've been, what I've done is I've reached out to the Agricultural Commission and asked if they would oversee the management plan and the lease, the terms of the lease, to making sure that Mr. Brandsfield is fulfilling the obligations as he outlined in the management plan and as we're expecting in the lease, and that they report back to us, the Select Board, in some kind of a joint meeting going forward. So there is a plan to do the monitoring, but probably more actively from the AGCOM reporting back to the Select Board. They have much more expertise in this than the Select Board does.
Not really. Not really.
But-
Really, they don't. And I think that that's a serious issue. I think that, you know, for conservation restriction monitoring, we have professional conservation restriction monitors come to the property and produce a report.
Yeah.
It's a really easy way, relatively speaking, to have a true expert in the subject matter. So I'll take that up with certain parties at my house-
I would love to find someone that could help us more actively do this.
Am Dark can help you.
I think I would be inclined to bring to the board a proposal to actually fund some annual monitoring, to make sure it's done properly.
Yeah.
And then my second question, I guess that wasn't that quick. This one is, sorry. Does the lease contain a timeline of the town's expectations for invasive management and old apple tree removal? And if not, can it?
The lease doesn't-
Or what management plan-
But the management plan could. I'm going to actually let John answer that.
Yeah, I would imagine this is at least a three-year process, usually five, to really eradicate some of the most recalcitrant invasive plants. So I would hope to get that much time. We would start right away. As far as apple removal, certainly have the means in terms of men and machines to get through that within the first year. It might take two. But I would also like to have some space to be patient-
Oh, yeah.
With some of the apples, hoping that maybe some of them prove that they'll produce fruit without a lot of inputs and maybe allow them to stay on board.
If they do their job.
If they do their job. As far, like, with, you know, the areas that I would want to plant with pawpaw, you know, they like to start in the shade, so it's kind of a nice opportunity is to leave them in place, interplant, and then come back later and take the apples out after. But as far as in the management plan, if identified areas that are the level ground, which are most suitable for container plant production, those areas I'd want to clear out right away. Leave the margins that are indicated for permaculture for a slower process.
And to keep the deer out.
Maybe.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's a big question.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to just-
Vin, Vin, racist.
You'll be next. Yep, thank you.
Vin Stolo through Sarah Dublitt. I wanted to ask, because there's been some confusion, at least on my end, about the structures that are on the property, primarily the house and the barn. And there's been some back and forth about, are they being sold? Are they being part of, are they being incorporated into the lease? I come down on the side of, if we're leasing the property, it makes sense to me to also lease the buildings rather than sell them, because I believe that you're creating a potential serious issue down the road. Should the lease, should the LSE not be able to effectively work the land and, you know, pull out, but then still maintains control over the buildings? You know, I don't see getting another agricultural entity in without access to those. So I just wanted to find out sort of where that stood.
So I can answer that. So the house is not part of the lease and never was. The house, the disposition of the house has not been decided yet. The upper barn is on a parcel, a small parcel, about 1.5 acres, which is not part of the APR, but which we are including in the lease with John at this time. The lower barn and the cottage are also included in the lease. In this case, those two sit on land which is not in the APR and is entirely separate. It's part of a 20-acre parcel. So those would be like structures only. I'm not exactly sure how legally that works. I assume Mr. Brandsfield has every right to come and go through those properties as he needs to, but he would have no, like, other access to that parcel.
So the proposal as it's being negotiated right now does not include the sale of any property?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Nor can it.
Well-
No, without a town meeting vote, we cannot sell any of this property.
Got it.
Yes. You're next. Yes, Peter.
Joanne Deary from Harvard Avenue. Thank you for coming to speak with us, Mr. Brandsfield. So I had looked at your plan. There's a partial plant list, and I noticed that it does have a number of shrubs. And there's a bunch of shrubs that it doesn't have. And I just wonder, is this, is this a complete list or, okay, so like vibranums or-
If they're native.
Danny berry or-
Yeah, if they're native, then, yeah. If they're widely available in other forms, then it doesn't make a tremendous amount of sense. I'm really trying to target plants that are not readily available.
Okay. And I wondered, can you confirm that your plan doesn't require the town to remove the apple trees at $10,000 an acre?
Yeah, I don't, we can do better than that.
In looking through the plan, I see that for parcels 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, you seem to be like kind of a nebulous plan for those, like you weren't really sure what you would do with those. Would you be open to leasing this land, not including those parcels? Or would you need to include those parcels 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
I think it's all or nothing. I don't think it'd be up.
Well, you mean, from a legal or point of view, we could.
Okay.
But if, you know, so it's partially, it's largely what your preference is. If it's, you know, you have plans for the entire APR land and that's where you want to be with the lease, then that's what we're going to receive.
Yeah, those areas are nebulous because of their proximity to 91, 91 Nagog Hill.
The home, yes.
The home, right. So I was leaving that open to receive comment and information both from that owner and the town as to what sounds the best.
Okay.
Okay. So it's open, yeah. And I'm, just to say, like, I am open to alliances with other people, okay? If there are people who want to work on this land within the guidelines that I've indicated in terms of my disposition against chemicals, that's, I'm open to that, okay? Of course, anybody who would want to sub would need to provide, would have to have a legal entity that could buy their own liability insurance, and if they're going to have workers, make sure they have comp and all of that. So it's not, I'm not open to subletting to anybody who just wants to come and hang out, do their thing, you know, drink beer or whatever, right? But if someone is serious and they-
I heard of that one.
Someone's serious and they have, you know, the means to be legal, then it's, yeah, I'm open.
So I had heard that you might be subletting part of it. And I just, I didn't, looking in the map, in the plan that you submitted, I didn't see which part you thought might be sublet or-
Yeah, it's not been indicated.
Okay. And then my only other question really is, field nine, the field that's kind of adjacent to, you know, the house where the pipes have burst and so on. Is that one really integral to your business plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Anyone else? Yes, sir, right there. Not behind you, then you'll be next. Yep.
Brian Delsbury, 46, Nagog Hill Road. We live right across the street from the Beale Forewood. My concern, question to you is, I know there's going to be a lot of chipping. The chips being brought in, are you going to be doing that on site?
Chips are brought in.
All of them?
Yeah, so there's chipping to be done with the apples.
Yep.
To do apple removal, but that's it for that.
So once that's done-
Yeah, no, it's not-
I'm concerned about noise of chippers all day.
It's not a wood processing, yeah, it's not a wood processing facility, right?
Okay, chainsaws.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to sell some firewood off the site, but we have a hydraulic wood firewood processor. It's not a two-stroke, you know, giant chainsaw that's running.
Okay.
It's a lot quieter than that.
Okay.
But no silence, quietude.
Okay.
Very important to me.
All right, and then the chips are going to be stored kind of by the barn?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
That's firewood. Yeah, it sounds good. I mean, we'd love to see something go on over there. It's been very quiet.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's beautiful, beautiful land. And I, just one thing to add, if there is any way that there could be a piece given back to the Native Americans, to the Indian prayer group, I think that would be a nice gesture for the town to try and work that into this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about, you were bringing in chips to make soil, so you weren't removing soil from-
Yeah. Yeah, the idea of a container-based farm, tree farm, a normal tree farm harvests the soil with the tree. So over the course of, you know, tens of years, we really deplete the soil. So we want to make our own soil. In part, we want to make soil because importing soil, importing compost opens you up to importing disease and pest factors. And the big one right now that I'm on a working group about is Asian jumping worms.
Oh, my God.
And these worms pose a dramatic threat to our watersheds. So the last thing I want to do is buy a load of compost from some producer that has a bunch of worm eggs in it. And now, next thing you know, that whole property is polluted and every plant that I sell is, you know, a demon seed of environmental destruction. So-
Can we coach you on that?
Sure. Wood chips are readily available. Every arborist at the end of every day is looking for a place to get rid of their wood chips. And it's a great way to utilize an inexpensive industry byproduct. Just compost it yourself for a while and you have a pretty decent soil substrate. Question?
Let her go back.
Okay. Do you have a follow-up, Swen?
Yeah, thanks, sorry.
No.
Joanne Deary from Harvard Avenue. The wood chips, like, are they a risk for the Asian longhorn beetle? Because we're not meant to move wood around, like-
Yeah, we don't have Asian longhorn beetle in the area, so they've been, they've been well eradicated.
And where the wood chips are coming from, they don't have it there too?
Locally. I mean, it's going to be somebody who's within 20 minutes, right? If they have to drive more than that, they're going to find somewhere else to go. So they'll be local, there are trees that are already in the area.
All right.
They're certainly not coming from out of state, right?
Thank you.
No one wants to haul chips like that.
Yes, sir.
Mark Frye, 75, Vetsel. Just two quick questions. Do you belong to the Farm Bureau?
No.
Okay. On the site here in Littleton, how is it going to compare to your site in Stowe, as far as the appearance?
They're nothing like each other.
Okay.
In fact, if I could say, my site in Stowe, you know, as you know, probably every farm has its armpit, you know, where it puts all its junk and its broken-down trucks and all that stuff. I have that far away from here, right? I have a place where I can do engine work, any mechanical work, hydraulics, all that happens elsewhere.
Yeah, the farm I work on, it's at two farms. One's the industrial part, the other one is the farm.
Yeah.
The, and we were talking about looking at the trees for apples that may be viable. There's also a large group of peach trees that I know are viable.
Mm-hmm.
And they're down in that corner behind the barn. I just wanted to, I don't know if you were aware of those or not.
No, and I'd be happy to, you show me around.
Yeah, it's great. I walk that orchard constantly just for my own exercise.
Yes. I haven't gone on the property much because, as I understand, you know, it's not open to the public and I'm not from this town. So I've only had a small handful of opportunities to really walk around and be with it, so.
And that's going to come as a surprise to a lot of the citizens here in Littleton, because they, you look at now, there's cross-country skis all over the place. They're skiing in there constantly.
Yeah, well, I've been trying to be respectful of.
Oh, no, no. And it's going to be, if you, certainly if the lease is, comes to fruition, it's going to be your property.
Yeah, if you look at the proposal, I've indicated trails around the edges of the property.
Wonderful, yeah.
Yeah.
Great, so that's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else like to offer a comment or a question? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Kristen Gazalkis, Six Cottage Way. Hi, John. Yes, at first I do want to say thank you for your proposal. Thank you for wanting to come to Littleton to give us this option to consider. I have a couple of questions. With the chips and the processing, does that mean you'll be bringing in a screener for composting screening to-
It's a very small volume, right? So there's really like compact ones that I would only, I don't, I can't own one of those, they're too expensive. So I'd imagine renting one for a period of a couple of weeks, screen, and then it goes away, right? And it's not one of those giant trombles that you see in the, you know, the big industrial soil-producing facilities. They're small items. I mean, we're talking something on the order of like a few hundred yards a year.
Okay.
You know, not thousands.
So will you be looking to sell any excess or are you planning to use all of it yourself?
No, I don't, I don't see, it doesn't make sense to me that that property should be any kind of a bulk material depot, you know? It's not, it's not what I want. I have that, like I said, I have that. I already have a site where I can do all that kind of bowling and jamming, high-volume, you know, beastly stuff.
Yeah.
Right? This is, this is a very separate, special thing to me.
Can you also speak to, I know that you've spoken about your containers, but can you describe a little bit more about what that entails? Because I think all of us have different ideas of what that means based upon our experiences with containers. And I'm also curious about the fertilizing, the watering, and winterizing, and the size.
Size?
Size of containers.
Size of containers. The containers range anywhere from 10 liters all the way up to like 1,500 liters, okay? So like the size of a large bathtub, okay? What it means is sheets of landscape fabric and strips for weed suppression, and then the containers are placed on top. And the containers are just a plastic base and a plastic wraparound. They have these finger-like protrusions all the way around with a little hole in the end, so that when the roots go looking out, they get guided out to the hole, they hit the air. The end of the root terminates and it causes the root to branch further back.
Yeah.
And that repeats over and over and over again, so that when you harvest, you just strip that hot fabric off and you have this root ball with a completely distributed root system through the volume of the pot. As opposed to, you know, you buy a tree from an orchard, I mean, from a nursery now, you have like three or four big roots that got severed, you know what I mean? 12 inches from the edge of the, of the, of the base. The plant just lost half to three-quarters of its root system. Then you get into that sleep, creep, leap, you know, where they, they just sit there and languish for a year.
Yeah.
They start to get going, the second year and the third year, they're, they start to grow like normal. These plants, you put them in the ground, they just take right off, okay? These plants, you put them in the ground, they just take right off, okay? So, it's, so it's like plastic, you know, small, all the way up to these large tubs that are up on the surface. Some of it's gonna have to be in ground, so like pot-in-pot, which is when you just sink a regular plastic pot in the ground, and then your pot slips inside. That's how you winterize the base of the tree. So you get it down, subterranean, okay?
So you'll be doing that for all your pots for the winter?
No, only the ones that are sensitive to winter kill. So we have like a ton of, I mean, yellow birch right now, like you can leave them anywhere, and they just keep growing. There's a handful of trees that work like that. Sourwood is a tree that really has a lot of demand that you can't get met. Those are more sensitive, they're a little further south, so those would be in-ground, okay? So it would mean digging a hole, you know, cutting a hole in the sheet plastic, in the landscape fabric, you sink your pot in there, and then they just, those pots stay permanently in the ground for the duration. And then, you put your smaller pot inside of that, and that's how they stay.
And then what about watering?
Watering, I imagine we're gonna have to put 5,000 to 10,000 gallons of tank, so that we can pump and fill, and then distribute. So, yeah, there's a network of irrigation, self-drip irrigation. So, you run a main line, and then you branch off down your rows, and you have these, they have these little emitters, these circular emitters that go on top, and then they just emit down through. So there's no, there's no sprayhead irrigation, no overhead irrigation, it's all drip.
Okay. And then the other component, I know that you're building your own soil, but given that these are in containers and not getting nutrients from the soil around that's in the earth...
Yeah.
Will you have to be doing additional fertilizing for them?
Yeah, the fertilizer that I've been working with that works for us is compost tea. So that is, pardon, it's a large vat of water, highly aerated. You put a sock of compost that's also aerated down in, so that you start blowing out the microbes that are in there, and then you feed those microbes. Fish hydroxylate, calp, humate, right? And then those, all those microbes digest those nutrients that you put in, and then you water that up, okay? So, so all the nutrients are contained within the bodies of the bacteria and the fungi and the phlegial and all of that. So there's no loose nitrogen, phosphorus, potassium. It's all contained within the biology in the tank, and you water with that.
Can I keep going?
Yes, yes, you can. Yes.
The select board has indicated that you'll be financing a lot of this operation through Bransfield Tree. And so, because you have Bransfield Tree, that, the company that I know, and then you're creating this one, how much is your existing Bransfield Tree company participating in the financing of this operation?
I think not much at all. I think I'll be using Bransfield Tree to do the heavy work, the, like, some of the labor that has, that has, you know, comp risks, so running chippers and chainsaws for the clearing, stump grinding, right? But at this point, I'm looking at forming a 501(c)(3). I've already started a conversation with a couple sponsors, so they can form a nonprofit, okay, to help finance some of the parts. But Bransfield Tree itself, we're using at the outset because it has all the insurance and all the protections, but that will phase out. We would hope to transfer over to a new organization that is separate, because I don't think the liabilities should be mixed between the two organizations, except maybe to hire Bransfield Tree to come in and do any kind of like, again, any kind of heavy lifting, any kind of heavy machinery work that needs to be done in the future.
So then, this leads to a couple of different other questions. Select Board, since you're relying on his finances of the tree company, are you doing anything in regards to safeguarding our risk with relying on this company as being the financing, in terms of auditing or reviewing financial records or of that process?
So as part of the lease and the management plan, there'll have to be reports coming back to us about the, like, what he sold, what's, what was produced on the property, and like, both from like volume and cost, or not cost, but like sale price, that type of thing? That was part of the lease with Mr. Auger too, that, you know, he had to report how many bushels of apples they harvested and things like that. So that will be coming back. We're not auditing his finances, per se, as far as that goes. And there's no plans necessarily, you know, we don't need to go through and audit his books necessarily, unless we don't trust what he's doing, what he says he's doing, and if we're in that situation, we already have problems, so. And the select board is okay with him forming another entity, right? Going forward, we discussed this at a meeting sometime last month, that he mentioned that he doesn't want to operate the orchard long-term as Bransfield Tree, and would like to have another entity, but doesn't wanna go through the overhead of creating a new entity until there is a lease, right? That you're gonna need part on some of this stuff.
Yeah, I understand that. Just, and back to you, John, in terms of your initial proposal, you, you know, made a real indication that you had the tree company all set up, ready to go, and I'm curious as to, of your existing sales that you have, how much of it is pertaining to the work that you're hoping to do on the farm currently now?
I don't understand the question.
Of your sales of Bransfield Tree now, how much of it is selling native trees that you grow?
How much will you be your customer?
Hard to say. It's really hard to say, you know? And if I may, this represents great risk to me, right? Like, at my age and state of life, like, I probably should be just buying houses and renting them or something like that, right? So, you know, this is not like some, you know, mega bucks financial boom for me. This is, this is my mission, this is my passion, right? How much Bransfield Tree will buy from the tree farm? I don't know, you know? I don't know, I mean, it may turn out that, that it just makes the most sense to let them continue to prune and cut trees, and that a separate organization has to, will be the one to do the planting. I'm kinda leaning that way, that there ought to be, that this organization really ought to be its own thing, have its own staff. If it's gonna go plant trees on someone's property, it's gonna be the people that work with those trees, right? So, that answers your question.
I was curious currently, because in your proposal, it sounded like that...
Oh, how much money do I do now in landscape installation?
Yeah, that, not installation, but it was led to believe that you had an existing tree-growing company. And so I'm just curious how much of...
I have a couple acres that I'm using to learn, that I've been using to learn, okay? And it's, there's successes and failures with that, okay? And I feel like I've learned enough, and that I'm ready to scale up, okay? But in terms of like, having enough plant material to like, put a shingle out, and start advertising to people and planting on their properties, it's really small.
Okay, and you don't, so therefore you don't have any existing contracts or anything for the species that you're growing?
I didn't wanna get into any big contracts until I knew I had. And it's gonna take three years to even get to the point where I have something to sell, right? So...
And, please forgive me, part of the reason why I'm asking you this is because from the select board, we've been told, or I have been told in different conversations, that, you know, that you're not gonna cost the town any money, that you're a good resource, this is why we should go with you, da-da-da-da. Well, that's all great to hear that upfront, but it doesn't seem like, well, we're due diligence to make sure that things don't fall apart, and then we as a town have to then invest back into the land, and we're right back where we are. So these are the things that have come up in the town meeting, whether to sell or to lease, you know? So these are the types of questions that I think folks in the town are wondering in terms of...
I would think that if, if I fall flat on my face in two years, the town still has gotten the land cleared, and a major head start on the invasive management on the property, okay? So, and anything that's there, in terms of the pots, and, you know, the irrigation, like, that's all stuff that I would wanna get out of the way and try to sell, okay? So the idea that I'm gonna like, review this giant tangled mess, I think is not realistic. And that you are, the town will get value in my presence for even a short period of time. And if you get a chance to look at the lease, you'll see that the town has multiple avenues to yank me out of there if I'm not performing, okay? So, and I am, again, taking great risk to scrape up everything I've saved, because this is like, looking like a half-million-dollar proposal, right? So, everything I've managed to put together in terms of free money to do this, to do something like this, like I said, I probably should go buy houses, right?
So, back to the apples, the trees and invasives. I believe Joanne's question was $10,000 an acre, and you said you could do it less than that? Does that mean the town, like, what, is that arrangement for...
I'm not charging anything. The town pays nothing.
He's doing it as part of what he needs to do to satisfy his business needs, right? He's clearing, he's effectively clearing the orchard for us for free.
And we as a town have decided that that's what we need to do.
Do you wanna say mine?
Well, I mean, the apples are not viable commercially, they're past the point where pick-your-own is really a worthwhile endeavor. So, they're, it's not, they're not doing anything. I mean, we could, we don't need to take them out, but anybody who takes that land, I think, and wants to use it for some other purpose, is going to need them removed sooner or later. And so, John's proposal didn't ask the town to clear the land, and the other proposals did to some degree.
And, so, because when I originally spoke to you, you said that you didn't need to clear the apple trees, so that's changed for you?
I don't know what the conversation that is, there's, they've always needed to be cleared.
Okay, 'cause I thought you were planting in between rows for the shade.
In places, like I said, with the pawpaw.
Okay.
Yeah, utilizing existing shade where necessary.
Okay.
But for the, if you look at the plan, the red areas that are intended for container production, those need to be cleared.
Okay. And it's three years that you'll be up and running before you'll even be able to sell anything?
I think the first year is just gonna be getting infrastructure in place, and then second year is getting the, getting populated, and then, you know, there are, with the smaller plants, you can plant liners in the spring, sell them in the fall, okay? So hopefully by the second year, by the fall of the second year, I'm selling plants, and then in the third year, things should really start booming.
Okay. I just have two other questions. Is there anything in the lease for safeguards if, for some reason, the town decides that you need to go, or that you decide that you need to go in terms of the condition of the land?
Yes, like, non-adherence to the management plan essentially is one of the outs.
Okay, so, but given everything that John has just described in terms of what he's needed to do with the land, is there, like, he's responsible for remediating the land back to a certain point? If, like, he's doing these container trees, and is he pulling all his container, his trees out when he goes, like...
Yeah, there's provisions in the lease.
Is there provisions that spell all that out?
Yes.
So, okay, so there's not gonna be a great deal of cost to the town if we decide we want a lease to have him leave?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Then my last question is about the Nishoba praying Indians. How do you feel about the Nishoba praying Indians and you being on their ancestral land, them wanting to be back upon their land, and many of folks of us in town wanting to be on their land? And how does that relate to you? And how that, your perception or how you feel about that?
So I was invited to generate a proposal, which is what I've done, okay? But to answer directly your question. I just spent a month in Colombia, okay? Meeting with people down there, spending a lot of time there, spending time alone on the mountain, right? And I met an elder named Amika from the Tubu Nation, and he shared with us that now is the time that the people with the heart of the earth get together and make changes, and imagine a new future, and create the new future, okay? That's what animates me. That's how I fit into this. That's my mission, that's what I believe, okay? So, I am open to alliances with anybody who wants to be a part of creating that new future, okay? So, whoever wants to be there with me and work in that direction, I'm open to. In the prophecy that Amika shared with us, several thousand years old, the genetics, the history is not what matters. What matters is what's in the heart, okay? These people that they saw would be coming from all around the planet to come learn from them, learn their ways, learn how to cleanse themselves, learn how to make offerings, learn how to be a peace with the earth. They have blue eyes, they have blond hair, they have brown eyes, they come in all shapes and sizes. So that's, that's the prophecy that I believe, that's what I, that's where I fit in, and that's what I'm offering. I'm offering an opportunity to create a space where people who have the earth, Madre Tierra, in their heart, and who wanna do the right thing by her, can come work with me to create that. So, again, I'm open to alliances with everybody, with anybody, so long as, you know, they're there for those reasons. And that's how I think about it and feel about it.
And I appreciate you sharing that. I also believe that there is ancestral connections to land, and I appreciate hearing that perspective, but the ancestral sacred land to our Nishoba praying Indians, I feel is important to us as well in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, come up to the microphone and tell us who you are and ask your question.
Hi, I'm very short. I'm Erin Jade, I live on Foster Street. Some years ago, I started growing native plants to support declining species of bumblebees following the work of Dr. Jigier, and have become very passionate about what I consider conservation gardening. And I feel that that is part of my mission here. And so, I just read your proposal today, actually. I haven't had a chance to, I didn't, wasn't able to see it before, and I felt very excited about a lot of parts of it, including the educational piece, the Miyawaki forest, the permaculture, pawpaw trees, a lot of it make, is really resonant with what I believe we should be doing with land. At the same time, my heart is heavy with concern for MPI being united, reunited, rematriated with their, as Kristin said, their ancestral land. As part of a, as somebody on the board of the Conservation Trust, we boundary this property with the Sarah Doublett land. And I don't really know what my direct questions are, other than just to express my concern that we just do due diligence to figure out how to create harmony around these missions. I see your mission as really beautiful and really important right now, and MPI, perhaps this could be an amazing alliance, and I would hope that we could maybe even give them some of the parcels that are not APR-designated right now, that perhaps we can literally give it back to them. So, I'm just here to share, really share my concern around this, and thank you all for being here. I know this has been a long process, and I just hope we can make this beautiful piece of land work for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm John Mitchell, and I live on Beaver Brook Road. I just wanna back up where she left off. I think this is a great, great idea, terrific what you're doing, I'm all for it. I just wonder if this is the right place. And just to put it in context, well, when the native people were here, they were growing apples on that land, and that's 1640, 1650. apples on that land, and that's sixteen forty, sixteen fifty. And as far as I can determine, nobody ever stopped growing apples there. So, what is that, four hundred years, four hundred years of apple growth? And I, I think this statement is more for the, for the board, but I'm just, I'm in defense of the apple orchard, and as has been pointed out, it was native land. They were, they were the apple growers there for, well, I don't, I don't think they were growing apples before the colonials arrived. But, anyway, I just, I hate to see the orchard go. And the thing about it is, is this one of the most aesthetically pleasing landscapes in the town? You know, you've got the, got the orchards in the spring and the sweeping hills going down to the reservoir, and, you know, I think, I know aesthetics doesn't fit into economic decisions, but maybe they should. And so, I, I just think we should do everything possible here to save the orchard, even if you let it go wild. I mean, I've argued that for a very ecologically diverse ecosystem, old orchards that are rich in wildlife. So, that's it. Thank you. Thank you. I, I really like this. I mean, I just, there's a lot of farm around here that may come up for sale, I'm afraid.
So, just for clarification, the land going down to the water is not part of the lease negotiations? It's not included in anything?
Yeah, I knew, I knew that, yeah. But flowering hills.
All right. Anyone else like to offer a comment or a question, or? See anyone? Okay, yes, sir.
Robert Brown, twenty-five Juniper Road. You don't know me, but they all do, and I kinda talk long, so I apologize in advance. First, I'll say, aren't we all a bit shocked at the demeanor and the interaction tonight? 'Cause this is not the meeting that I thought it was going to be based on the last several weeks. I just wanna say that in a positive way. I think it's really great. With that regard, I do have a series of questions. So, hearing about your three-year transition with regard to sale, and aware that recently MDR noticed of the second year of non-compliance, comes in with a piddly thirty-five-hundred-dollar calculation of sales required with regard to meeting, you know, staving off MDR with regard to the APR requirement, et cetera. So, I just wanna hear, you're gonna be able to meet that for the 2025 growing season such that nobody's asking the question of, you seem like you're the savior right now, and I share. I, I've really been turned around, now seeing your full management plan. I didn't really know, I read back when you submitted your simple plan, et cetera, but now seeing the more expansive plan, night and day in terms of my awareness of what your intentions are in addition to you being here. So, I appreciate all of that, but I still would like to ask the question, just to kinda check off the box, that I'm not falsely, you know, thinking that you're the, the savior when in fact, wait a minute, not doing due diligence to know, in fact, you're gonna meet those compliant, you know, you're gonna stave off the MDR, you know? I don't want them to come back and say, you still didn't meet the compliance, you know, the requirements.
I think if I need to produce evidence of thirty-five-hundred dollars worth of sales within 2025, we'll find a way to do that.
Okay.
So, also, just so everyone's aware, we have sent his management plan off to MDR. They haven't got his comments back. They were excited that we were making good progress on the lease, so there, MDR is aware of what the current situation is.
No, I, I know, but my gut, and I appreciate that, Matthew, I genuinely do. I, I think that you three-
They, they haven't commented on, you know, is he producing, going to produce enough or anything like that? And MDR has, will have negotiations as well.
I'm, I'm sure you will. I, I just recognize three of you have served on the working group, or are, were serving on the working group. You're more in-depth, in my opinion, than anybody else except for some of those working group members, and possibly John now, et cetera, but I, I still, it seems like MDR's starting to surface, whereas I think Matthew recently said, I think that we thought there wasn't going to be any concerns with regard to really MDR taking over, and now all of a sudden, they're emerging as seemingly a, a bigger threat, and I am concerned about that, it just-
It could be that they are, you know, publicly staking out a claim in order to start a process. I do believe that if we signed a lease and they looked at the management plan, they would tell us in advance of the end of this season whether or not they felt that, you know, missing the thirty-five-hundred dollars was gonna put us at risk. My gut says, if we signed the lease and they looked at the management plan, they would waive that for 2025 with the, you know, requirement that 2026 and forward, there would be, you know, real agriculture on the site.
And I agree. I think I often look for reasonable, you know, solutions from reasonable people. It's just that in the last several weeks, maybe we're not considering their basis as reasonable as we'd like them to be. I'll just make that comment and move on. You mentioned personal risk, and I, I must admit, I was surprised by that. Your, you know, process and the way you're coming about this, but I find myself curious as to how risky, you know, do you? I think you're being very open, very honest. I appreciate that, but with regard to, and I didn't take this, you're coming in with the expectation of success. I hope that for you. You know, with that, you made just a slight comment with regard to, if it's two years, you know, it's a problem, et cetera. So, that me, you know, opening me up to a question I never anticipated asking, which is, how risky do you think this is? Like, as you evaluated your business plan, how much of, do you, do you feel really heartened by your opportunity to be successful, or do you really feel like it's somewhat of a-
No, I feel, I feel very confident in the demand for these plants, right? Risk to me is, this is a leased property with a lot of politics involved, right? So, that's the risk that I see. The other risk is, I could get cancer, you know, I could get run over by a bus, like, those kinds of things. So, risk in terms of not leaving everything that I have to my children, but leaving a significant portion of my wealth and effort on the table here in Littleton, should I, God forbid, fall out.
Yeah. So, that actually is one, that leads to a question that I did have written down in advance, and that's because of who I am. And with regard to the last lessee, I think the town and the last lessee, that's where it fell apart, if you will. Everything in the first X years, seemingly, I've only learned from the good work of the working group. But it seems like the first X years, I'll say, good. Guy was the manager, Morrison's, good, positive, et cetera. But then, as the person started to age out and realizing transition not necessarily happened, the way it's been explained to me, or is the way I understand it, is you start to see the declining, you know, invest in the future because you're not gonna be there to reap the future, et cetera. So, you just pose the question of, let's hope, not an illness, but from a town perspective, I'm of the personal opinion that myself and many residents in town feel really, you know, caught off guard by the select board's lack of foresight, lack of monitoring. I don't wanna really, I'll, I'll embrace yours. History isn't so much what's about, but like you said, about the future, et cetera. So, so how do we gauge with regard to the future with regard to, you know, you haven't been able to sign the lease, and seemingly the political process would seem like darts and arrows are coming your way, you know? And yet, I'm already trying to say, I think it's a twenty-year lease that you're negotiating, and yet I'm already saying, what happens after twenty years? Because I feel like we just unfortunately had a negative experience with regard to that sort of concept that didn't already have the, the future sight. So, if you could just-
Yeah.
-attempt to address that.
I would think that apples in the eighties and nineties and two thousand and tens became an increasingly less profitable and more difficult business to perform. As the pests kept increasing, the diseases became more resistant, the costs of the IPM programs kept going up, the cost of the labor kept going up. You see all of the orchards, all, all the ones that can have turned towards, like I said, the proposal, you know, donut circuses and goat rodeos, right? To try to make it work. And that particular property was not amenable to that, 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 those other revenues, right? So, it would make sense to me that whoever was sitting on that, that horse toward the end of its run was, you know, losing ground with every year, okay? You know, could there be like a five-year drought, and the watershed dries up, and there's no water to water the trees? Yeah. You know, that's another one of those risks, right? Will I be putting trees in pots that will come to fruition in ten to fifteen years? You know, and be worth four thousand dollars apiece as opposed to four hundred dollars apiece? Yes. So, there's an investment in the future that happens just by what I'm putting in place that can be reaped ten, fifteen, twenty years into the future. You know, will I create a business that will be so valuable that I could sell it to somebody else who wants to continue with it? I hope so, you know? But I think that the, the move towards conservation gardening, the move away from people having acres of lawn and looking to create residential, commercial properties that are in line with the local ecosystem, to create habitat instead of just aesthetic, you know, yahoo, right? I think that's a trend that hopefully is only gonna continue to rise. But, you know, it's farming. On some level, it's an act of faith, right?
So, again, another extension of, of that with regard to the monitoring, and I'm not at the least bit trying to saddle the select board, or more importantly, you with this concept, but I do think that, that, as you just stated in example, some trees that are going to be grown with regard to having a life of eight, ten, fifteen years, that's really a positive thing, I think, with residents who wanna see long-term success and longevity. Having said that, I wouldn't wanna saddle you with any part of a provision in a lease that, you know, gets into monitoring that sort of progress, that sort of thing, but I do wanna come back to where I think Christine first spoke about it, and Matthew, I think you responded the way I'd like, I would like the select board to dig in. I do think there are professional services that can be engaged to perform the proper monitor, professional monitoring. And I do it not to be throwing shade at you, but rather to ensure that the past non-performance is not repeated, not from a concern, but from a just, let's continue to make sure that we're doing the right things. In that regard, I don't know. I question how many people even know about an ag commission and how many people have attended, whereas I think more people here have attended select board meetings. And so, I'm very much interested in the, the physical presentation, or if you will, during a select board future agenda on almost an annual basis. I think this orchard experience of the last several years has been a challenging one for the town, and I would like it to be something that's dealt with very effectively and not be a, well, the person wasn't paying taxes, nobody knew about it, things weren't being done, nobody knew about. Somehow, this, this has already now surfaced to be somewhat crisis-like, in my opinion. And I'd like that to rest for you and us, that sort of thing. So, if we could get into, within the lease or the March sixth meeting, I'm gonna try to stray there too far, but get into some aspect of really ensuring the residents with regard to, and let's, let's applaud what you're doing for the success that it can be. But with that comes a responsibility to more or less not be a, just trust us, we got it, because that trust was, you know-
Squandered.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I mean-
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying not to be-
No, I, it was, it was, it was a, it was a colossal failure on, on our part to like, let the things get as bad as they did. I think one of the advantages of hiring someone to do a, a monitoring report is they present a report to the select board in an open meeting, and everyone comes to look at it. And I think to your other point, you know, that person isn't gonna be counting which trees are how old. You know, they're gonna be saying, how much water are you drawing out of the well? How much, you know, is the, is the barn in good condition? Like, let me see your, they, they're gonna know exactly what to look for, for the health of the, for the health of the land and the health of the operation, and give us some real reports, and it's important that that's an independent person, not a select board member.
Correct.
Yeah.
And to your other point, I would hope that when you're sitting up here on the select board in ten years, and I'm not, that someone's talking to Bransfield about, you know, what's happening at the end of your twenty years? Is there a succession plan? What are we doing? 'Cause I think that's one of the things that the select board failed at last time with the orchard lease with, and, and it needs to be much more proactive, but asking what a succession plan is for twenty years away is a little premature at this point.
Completely. Couldn't, couldn't agree more with that. But I would like that, as you just stated, the public presentation and, and the commitment from the select board in order to do that. Separately, I saw your brochure or-
Newsletter.
Newsletter, thank you. And terrific, thank you. I think, as, as somebody just mentioned, apologized for not knowing who, aspects with regard to the success with regard to the tree removal. I'm one of those people that could have recited the ten K per acre estimate from Ryan Ferrara, and five thousand trees, half a million dollars that you're gonna eat, or you're not gonna pay, but that outside firm, you'll do it for less, but nonetheless, this is a significant removal of a liability on the town that's gonna, and all likelihood, as Matthew I think said earlier, if not you, then who? And us probably having to fund it, et cetera. So, I would just encourage, whereas it's not in the contract from what I can tell, I don't think the lease that's being negotiated is available for public review. It's kinda been referred to, and I wouldn't expect it to-
The lease is in the packet, correct?
Oh, I missed that. Okay, then-
Or should be in the packet. I believe it's in the packet.
Okay, then I, then I, I glazed over because I was so interested in the fields review and, and your comments, you know, that sort of thing. But I do think from a newsletter standpoint, that whether it's because we start to, some of us start to know you, et cetera, but different aspects with regard to what's the public interested that's outside of the lease, that might be worthwhile from a newsletter perspective, or just a, you have a meet and greet as opposed to a public hearing in order to just share, here's what I've been able to do, here's where I feel like I'm on target, here's where I'm, my problems, you know, all of those sorts of things. I think that would could, again, heal, you know, some-
So, I'll, I'll take a little bit of this. So, we've actually had conversations about the management plan, and, and there needs to be more of a timeline in there on some of the things, like, like removal of the trees within, or majority of the trees, and then invasives under control within three years, five years, ten years, whatever we decide is reasonable on his part and our part for what we want. So, that's still being negotiated.
Great.
And then, that will be monitored by AgCom or this independent group. But we need to come up with, I, I mean, we generally support everything in this plan, we just need to fine-tune some of these things.
Good, good. And again, I appreciate you folks coming together tonight to allow for this. It's very, very helpful. I wanna dip a little bit into the Nishoba praying Indians, just to a little bit extent. I've recently learned about something that I never knew about, and we have to look at my notes in order to, to get it correctly, but the concept of a, and somebody out there can correct me if I'm saying it wrong, a cultural restriction easement. I never even heard of the thing. And yet, it seems to give, it seems to be like a C R, that's known as a C R E, and allows for indigenous people to have access and recognition with regard to property, and it's something that I would encourage the select board to consider, as well as the public to consider, because I don't think, I think there's recognition that land is so sacred in some cases that even the, the possibly well-intentioned is, becomes a negative because it- it exposes ancestral sacred ground to scrutiny and curiosity that can lead to damage. So as much as I'm throwing it out, I'm throwing it out well-intentioned, and I encourage select board and you to ponder aspects of how it might be, some aspect of what you've heard with regard to NPI, with regard to our history of the past in the positive way, not, I agree with the comments, I was impressed by what you said with regard to history. But I think there's something there that if there's, I think we all come to be with CRs and things that think that those are positive things, I just want to make sure that my mentioning CRE, in fact, is a positive thing as opposed to not leading to unintended negative consequences. But I don't think that sort of thing should be overlooked. Moving on with regard to the house, I, from the working group, I came to have a great appreciation with some of the working group members who really connected the future of farming, not necessarily what you're doing with the property. You seem to be threading the needle for the town with regard to having a great solution with regard to a really damaged problematic property. But should you, something negative befall you? The town needs to have, in my opinion, that, what I learned from the working group, an aspect of an association of the structures, because they're otherwise not going to be able to be constructed around that property in a meaningful way. A farmer needing access to housing, a farmer needing access to a barn, you know, those sorts of things, which that background leads to this question. There's, because the house is not part of the lease, because it's not available to be sold, the select board and the town residents are still going to be probably confronted with the non-APR land that you are, you know, leasing, and the aspects of these structures. And so time will pass, maybe it won't be a red-hot issue, you know, a year from now, who knows? But some points can bubble up with regard to the house and the non-APR lands. And so I find myself, because of this believing I've learned from the working group, the connection of the housing and the barn structures with really a farmer and somebody in the land, working the land, has to be there experiencing it, et cetera, there's that connection. And so I'm looking for, is there a, are you open? I heard your openness, applaud it. But are you open with regard to the contiguous land, the abutting land, not all of it, but aspects that somebody might influence at the subsequent meetings before the lease is finalized, open to having pathway of property that might, yes, it's included in APR, it might be even subject to your negotiations right now, that transition is expected to be included in the lease? But I'd make the argument that if there could be a sliver of the land, or some portion that's reasonable to you and to the town, that might provide a pathway for whomever is in that house, has like a natural, they're not just so isolated like an island, but rather there's a natural flow, if you will, with regard to a future purposing of land with regard to farming, or with regard to really making it vital, et cetera. So, sorry if I lost you in that.
You kind of lost me in that, but are you asking, are you asking, like, the house is on a little over an acre, are you asking, would he be willing to carve out more of the acreage around the house?
Yes, that specifically, or at least that's what I would encourage the select board...
So all of the acreage immediately surrounding the house, except that one acre is APR land?
And that's why I'm saying, so here's where I come at it. MDR compliance, APR compliance, you have to do 50% of the APR. Okay, so I think you're negotiating for roughly 49-plus acres, et cetera. However, from an MDR and APR compliance, all that's legally required is 25 acres, 50% of the APR. So it seems to me like within that, and around the house, might be some of APR property that if not needed as a must-have within your lease to have you be successful, might it be removed from the lease such that there's a flow, if you will, from the house to other properties? Because some of the properties aren't part of, it's what, 100-acre parcel or more, and only 49 to 53 are within APR.
Right, so, I'll... So we have had conversations with MDR, Karen and I talked to them last week. If we want to carve off APR parcels, the minimum size is five acres, right? That you have to put in, and MDR will allow us to subdivide the parcels, but they have to be at least five acres. So that would be basically taking half of that parcel, and if, and if John was amenable and we wanted to do that, we would have to go through a negotiation to change the terms of the lease. And, you know, you can comment whether he'd be, I don't know, do you know whether he'd be amenable to that or not, depending on, you know, what his current production and requirements are, so...
So I'll just back off the question a little bit, because I'm not trying to do any gotchas here. But I'm trying to provoke thoughtful considerations as you're still negotiating this, both on what I'm looking for you to do as a resident of Littleton, and also you as the potential SE with regard to being responsive to that three to five minutes background that I gave before I got to a vague question that you helped me correct.
So there's also a bunch of, you said there's 100, roughly close to 100 acres. There's 20 acres behind the lower barn, roughly seven acres that we're talking about putting in article at Maytown meeting that Conservation Commission wants to take control of. There's another 13 acres that is general municipal land behind that barn.
There's another like six acres...
That's not, under negotiation, we're not doing anything with that. It's wooded, it's staying that way. There's no talk of doing anything with that. There is...
There's, behind the upper barn, there's another chunk, and then there's a big chunk down the hill from that long field along Nagog. So, just to say, there's, like, the non-APR land is, tends to be on the margins, but some of it is pretty good stuff, and none of that's going to be included in the lease. So I'm not going to speak for...
There's the self-help parcels that we may or may not include. They're not integral to his plan, so it's more, he's doing us a favor if we include them, if we want something done with the trees, I think, so...
So I get the aspect of the trees. I hope what's not lost in my, I'm not trying to be vague, but I'm also, I'm far from expert, you know, far, I'm nothing, you guys are. But the concept of being, allowing for the house not to be an island, I think is something that I place on both of you with regard to, if you can give a consideration. And there's people in the audience that are far better than me to articulate what might be desirable and might not be desirable with regard to what property around the house might be advantageous to not have in the lease, so that the town, who does have the house, has something that is manageable and viable to present to somebody in the future as the disposition of the house is undertaken.
So I think the challenge there is that all the land around the house is under APR, and we would have to go through the state and change the APR and the lease in order to change that section. But there are nearby chunks of land which are not in the APR. I understand your contention of like having it contiguous. The problem with it is that contiguous land is much more difficult to remove from the existing APR parcel.
So, and I promise, I'll give this up in a moment. I think you're, I think the select board and the town residents are concerned with regard to staving off MDR takeover. I do think, in particularly a night like this, you're doing an awful lot to gain back trust with regard to the management of the property and the responsibility you have for that property. In that regard, the way I read the MDR boogeyman, so to speak, is you've got to do the 50% of the APR. So it's not all, I know your interest, and I think you come in with this political firestorm of sorts, and so I'm just trying to carve out, if there's a way, I understand the process could be very complicated, but the fact that there's complicated doesn't negate, in my opinion, the approach that I'm bringing to you of, don't give up on it just because it's complicated, think in terms of the long term with regard to the house connection, and if you're open to it, I'm not trying to sabotage your success, far from it. But if I am, then I apologize, I'm just recognizing there's a, there should be a value to the house and whoever that future homeowner is. And I think that would be a loss for the town and the future homeowner from a farming standpoint, from a utilization of the land, if it's hastily tied up for 20 years, because you're not going to be on the select board in 20 years, you may be into a succession scenario. Yeah, I'm, yeah, so again...
Okay, understood, yeah.
So, thank you. All right. Thank you very much for all your time, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi there, Dustin Neale, 17 Lakeshore Drive. I'm currently the president of Littleton Conservation Trust as well. Thank you, Mr. Bransfield, for being here tonight. Thank you to the board for putting the meeting together. I know it took a lot of work and effort, and appreciate that. I want to start by commending your vision to bring back native trees and support the wildlife that supports them, excuse me, that depends on them, that's really important to us, it's really important to everyone who's interested in this land. As has been mentioned, probably too much, I'm sure you're aware of the public sentiment and this land's connection to the indigenous people that lived there for a long time, and the strong public opinion for that to be returned to them in whole or in part, in any way that is possible. I'm sure, from what you've said tonight, that you and allies of the Nishoba praying Indians share a lot in common, actually, and that we have a mutual respect for the indigenous history of that land. As Rob tried to get to, there's definitely still very strong demand for creative solutions, right? Just to be able to farm more around the house doesn't necessarily, for example, require it to be subdivided off, it could be sublet off, different things. And I don't at all want to sort of be in the middle of negotiating between the parties that deserve to be negotiating, but if you're open to the collaboration that it sounds like you are, I would just encourage you and the board to embrace those creative solutions, work together, work together with any other interested parties to find where it is that that middle ground can be reached. Because I do think that there's some there. And then Kristin stole my thunder a little bit earlier, but if you are granted a tenancy, have you thought about how you can honor that indigenous history and perhaps engage directly as partners with the NPI to, you know, work together? If you have any thoughts on that, we'd love to hear them.
Yeah, I'll just restate that, I mean, I think I've made it clear, like you said, you know, I'm, you know, in agreement, right? So I don't know what that shape is. I don't, I haven't met anybody from NPI. I did reach out to try to meet somebody and it didn't happen. So, you know, I'm open to talk, you know? And I filled out a proposal that includes all of the APR land because that's what was required.
Sure.
But if somebody else wants to take some chunk of it to do something else with it that fits in with the requirements of APR, and as I've stated before, they have legal insurance, you know, requirements met, yeah, let's make an alliance.
Makes sense, good to hear it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else that wanted to offer something here tonight? We've had a good discussion, well...
I just have...
One, yeah, how about one question?
You're losing them, you're losing them.
It's the, if you're talking about making arrangements for the APR land, maybe even a memorandum of understanding might work amongst groups? But there's the parcel, there's the Sarah Doublet parking lot area, and then there's a small APR parcel at the end there. It would almost seem if maybe that could be either let go, or whoever's going to be in charge of or maintaining the parking lot, if that parcel could be, I haven't looked at completely your plan, so I don't know if that little section is major to you. So if that's something that could be let go, then it could give some opportunity for other avenues in how that property could be used.
So I think that was one of the nebulous ones that, who was, Joanne was talking about, and it's actually APR, self-help land, APR.
Exactly.
So I believe that Charlie had a maintenance agreement with the town for that self-help land, and he did have fruit trees on it.
Yes.
In the past.
Okay.
And if I can say, a little bird told me that number 91 is maybe going to be for sale.
Look at that.
Yeah, so I don't know how much juice is out there, because it's a pretty high price on that property.
Right.
But that property, which is adjacent to all that land on there...
Right.
...is for sale.
So, that's wonderful. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else we haven't heard from tonight? If not, I think, a lot of good questions here tonight, I think we've all learned a lot. Any of the board members want to offer anything by way of wrapping things up? Karen, do you have anything?
No, I really appreciate you coming, appreciate your time. Appreciate everybody who came in tonight, such thoughtful questions, thank you.
I think that Mr. Bransfield proposal is the best one I've seen for the orchard so far, and I'm enthusiastically in favor of it.
So I love the vision and everything that's been talked about, and I was involved in the last lease negotiations for the orchard two years ago, and this process and this vision and this plan is so much better than what we would have gotten with Storm Along when we were negotiating with them. The lease negotiations have been very cordial and pleasant, and I'm hoping we can come up with a solution that makes everyone happy. And then the orchard will be beautiful or in better shape, you know, going forward, so. And thank everyone for coming in, I appreciate the questions. As I said, we're going to have the meeting on March 6th in the library, where we'll talk more about this, and another one on April 14th, which will be more focused on the house and future things, so looking forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.